Okay, it's seven o'clock according to the official time on the wall. I call a regular meeting of the Buchanan City Council to order and ask if you all would join me in silence, please. Thank you. We'll respect the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have Wesley and students this evening? Yeah, okay. It's our custom that we have you stand up, face the cameras, tell us your name, where you're from, and what your major is. We'll start with Big D up here.
I'm Brendan Murray. My major is Criminal Justice. I'm from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania.
I'm Ryan Eckert from Bridgeport, West Virginia, and my major is Marketing and Communications.
My name is Kayla Cunningham, and I'm from Charleston, West Virginia. I'm a Business Management major.
My name is Brianna Scott, and I'm from Greenbrier County, West Virginia, and I'm a Public Relations major.
Not so bad. Any others?
Hi, I'm Yesu Byun, and I'm from Korea, South Korea, and I'm majoring in Business.
I'm Brian Duraner. I'm from Thurmont, Maryland. My major is Support Business with a minor in Communications.
That is, looks like it. Glad to have you all. Pretty welcome. Let me look. Don't have any yeses on the schedule here. Okay, it brings us to Department Board Reports. Michael?
Yes, just a couple items tonight. One significant item, you do have in front of you in your packet Resolution 2014-17, noted as general fund budget revision. Just bring your attention to that. We've had a work session in regards to re-appropriations of some excess fund balance that we had ending fiscal year 2013-14, and we've made some decisions at the last council meeting of those appropriations. So all this is doing is finalizing and formalizing that. I do want to note that economic development, per councils' wish, receive $20,000. Professional services legal, those are the monies, and $11,783 will be used for the codification. I think Mr. Edwards is maybe going to talk about that this evening. Council capital outlay, we're going to leave $30,000 in for contingency, and then another $20,000 will be appropriated to the CBB. So you see to the far right, that's the $50,000 balance. Police Department, new equipment, the $14,000 represents the acquisition and purchase of body cameras. The Fire Department has the acquisition of a cutter system. Transportation enhancements, $39,000 is the lighting that Mr. Holland spoke about at the last meeting. And then just $23,000 appropriated for street paving, which will zero out that excess fund balance. These are the revisions as voted on by council at the last meeting and represented in Resolution 2014-17, roll call vote requested.
Entertaining motion to approve or adopt Resolution Number 2014-17. Mr. Recorder, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Pugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Albaugh?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mrs. Copari?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Want to remind you that, it's hard to believe, but we finished down our first quarter of our fiscal year. That was end of September. Still a little early in October. We're still reconciling, so I hope to have a first quarter report in comparison at the next council meeting, which I believe is the 16th of October. So it'll give you a little understanding and idea of where we're at at this point at the end of the first quarter financially. Also a reminder that on Monday at nine o'clock at Bridgeport's Conference Center, we should hear our fate on the Home Rule application. I intend to travel to Bridgeport to hear our fate. Hopefully it's good fate. We have a couple people working behind the scenes to maybe give us a slip idea of where we stand, so we'll see how that goes. Other than that, again, we'll have your quarterly report at the next council meeting, and I'm sure we'll have some other items to discuss as well. That's all I have for this time.
Questions for Michael? Chief, Tacey?
Good evening. Have a, just three or four quick things. Our aerial truck passed, recently passed its annual certification. We are now in the process of doing our annual pump test. We're doing vacuum tests, that always leads to replacing a few valves and whatnot, so that's just kind of considered routine maintenance. We're in the process of doing that. We'll be doing an actual pump test where we make water flow on October 15th, and the new tools that we got, our new rescue tools ordered. That's all I have for this.
Do we got anything for Mitch? Thank you. Jerry Arnold, Street Commissioner.
I'd like to say it'd be more brief for Mitch, but I don't think he can make it. Consolidated Public Board met on the 25th. The board approved a 5K run hosted by the Wellness Center in Westland, approved a request for the high school homecoming parade on October 15th, approved the Veterans Day Parade request. Also, they denied a request for a road toll. Jay discussed the flood control project and LED street lighting conversion, and there was discussion on the three new parking spaces there on Manchester. As far as the report, we're 75 to 80 percent complete on Gateway East. If you look out the window there, you almost see us coming up the street. Also, we were able to get the overlay completed on Upsher Avenue for paving overlay last week, and we will be continuing our paving efforts this month. We've kind of split off some of the crew, and I've been doing both sidewalk and paving simultaneously. So again, we'll be working on that. We completed the EFA system on the PSC, that outside insulation on those windows, those exposed windows and things where the blackboard was. We've completed that, and been doing some repairs on the Gibson Library. And that's all I have. Unless there's questions.
Questions for Jerry?
I don't have any questions, but during the consolidated board meeting, there were a couple items that we clarified that are worth noting. There had been questions about the, who's responsibility it is to keep their sidewalks, you know, clear of debris and so forth, even on Route 20 up from the courthouse to McDonald's. That's the responsibility of the property owners. Is that correct, Jerry?
Yes.
And we clarified that. Two, the signage was discussed very briefly, and the new signage that people really seem to like, those were donated, the monies were donated for those signs. And there is a problem with reflectivity eventually, it wears out, Jerry? Yes, yes. And I wanted to make a note of that. And also, I've had several phone calls about the River Trail and some concerns from citizens that when it becomes darker much earlier, that they're somewhat hesitant to walk there at night because there's inadequate lighting. And the mayor, I believe, said he would, there's a couple items he had, there's a trees, a couple of trees that he trimmed to allow better light, and that we maybe need to have, you know, additional lighting there at some point in time. So that was part of that meeting that I just wanted to report on. Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry. Jay Holland, City Engineer?
Two minutes, two minutes. I can do that. Try to be quick. One o'clock, go. I'm going to let Mr. McCauley talk about the Suddenlink Right-Away project that has gone on now for 14 months, see if there's any news on that. FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program on the regenerators, still waiting to hear back from their benefit cost analysis review with FEMA III out of Philadelphia that occurred last week in Charleston. Hope to get some news on that next week so that we can proceed forward with whatever we need to do on that. The water treatment plant improvement project, Chapman Technical Group continues work on the project, they're about 70 percent complete with the design drawings. Still looking for that early spring 2015 advertising and bidding. On the water storage tank inspection project that I briefly touched on last month, the final reports are in. I started to review them, and then I put those on hold because there's Senate Bill 373 in the above-ground storage tank bills and all the plans and registrations and certifications on our above-ground storage tanks that need to take place before December 3rd and January 1st. So I've put the reviewing of the inspection reports on hold. Received Route 20 McDonald's lane widening project, received a letter from the DOH last week. They have begun their preliminary engineering and replacement and acquisition of the right-of-way, and they anticipate bidding the project in January with the start of construction in February. That is their plans. They've asked us to review the plans that they sent to me last week along with the letter for any conflicts with the existing utilities, and I've completed the water review, and Sam's currently working, Sam and Tim are currently working on the water sewer review, and then we'll forward that information back to them so that they can incorporate those comments into the plans. The Lumos Fiber Optic Installation in Jawbone Park has hit yet another snag. It appears as if the right-of-way that Lumos had was with the renter and not the property owner, so there is no right-of-way. So we've just put that project on hold. We told them to contact us once they've got all their paperwork in order, and we'll proceed. Gateway East Enhancement Project, Jerry reported incorrectly, we are 77 percent done, not 75 to 80. And per your rules, discretion, I mean, direction, last city council meeting, I have completed the bid package for the 65 LED lights, and those go out to bid on Monday, and hope to open bids up in about a month. Quarter H Utility Improvement Project on the south side of the eastbound lane, nothing new to report. In your correspondence, and we can talk about it at that time, you'll have the letter on the Army Corps of Engineer Local Flood Control Project Letter that was sent to the Army National Guard, and we can talk about it at that time if you wish, or we can talk about it now.
Go.
Go. That's just a letter that I sent to Major General Hoyer requesting, you know, their participation in an IRT, which is Innovative Readiness Training Exercises that they do, and that's where, as I explained to you, that they could offer some services and manpower and equipment for the local flood control project. Haven't heard back from him. It was only sent out a week ago, but that's the copy of the letter, and currently waiting on their reply, and that's it.
Questions? Any questions?
When do you plan on having the 22 percent done?
The 22 percent? I'm going to defer to-
23 percent.
23 percent. I'm going to, well, I was holding out 1 percent retained. I'm going to defer to Mr. Arnold on that, but you know, if the weather holds out-
Couple weeks.
Two to three weeks, you know? And that would be really great and optimistic, but it's getting colder and, you know, it takes a little bit longer for concrete to set up, but we've got the blankets, insulating blankets and stuff like that that we can use in that case, but we're seeing the end. We're coming to the fruition. Coming to fruition. Any other questions?
Thank you, Jack. David?
Well, Mayor, since these other slackers haven't been doing much lately, I'm going to take their time plus my usual half hours. I'll try to be, I'll try to be brave. A couple of updates on things we have been working on. First, I'm excited to report that tomorrow will be the first exploratory meeting of what might come to be the Upsher-Louis or maybe the Louis-Upsher, we don't know yet, Drugs and Violent Crime Task Force. Bill Elinfeld, U.S. Attorney from Wheeling, will be here to shepherd us through that process. I think there's at least a commitment to participate in the meeting from all of the area agencies, the two cities, Weston-McCannon, Lewis County, Upsher County Sheriff's Departments, the prosecutors. We'll have a federal prosecutorial presence. There'll be people from the Federal Marshal's Office and from the various detachments of the state police, and I think we've got some guests coming also from Clarksburg and Elkins as part of that, again, to explore what we can do that might end up being akin to what we have to our immediate east with Randolph County, Tucker County, Pocahontas County, and to our immediate north in Harrison County. So more to follow on that, but the meeting is tomorrow morning. There's been a lot of hoopla during the past several days concerning Suddenlink and the dispute that you've had some emails from me about concerning Viacom. I must tell you that when it comes to TV cable matters, I typically receive more contacts about those kind of things than most of the other things that we think are way more important. But I thought I would update the council, and you have before you a memo tonight, and I promise to read quickly. It stated today from me to the council, TV Cable Board, and to me and Josh regarding Suddenlink versus Viacom and the elimination of eight Buchanan TV cable services. The purpose of this memorandum is to update the council and our Buchanan residents about the removal of a number of popular TV cable services about midnight on Wednesday, October 1. First, let me remind the council that under federal law, and particularly the provisions of the Cable Communications Policy Act of 1984, passed on October 30, 1984, the earlier ability of municipalities to regulate cable rates and programming was abolished by Congress. The primary purposes of the act were to, one, promote competition within the cable industry, and, two, generally deregulate the cable industry. Pursuant to our city's current TV cable franchise agreement set forth within Ordinance Number 347, Section 7.02A provides, "Under current federal and state law and regulation, the city does not have the right to regulate rates," end of quote. Section 6.01 of the current TV cable franchise agreement provides, quote, "The grantee," that's Suddenlink, "shall not add, eliminate, or replace services or otherwise modify its channel lineup without first notifying the board and council, except where such consultation is not reasonable or practical due to either (a) the application of the then applicable state and/or federal law, or (b) the nature of any contracts which the grantee may now have or may have in the future with any providers of cable service programming," end of quote. Pursuant to federal law, municipal franchising authorities may not dictate programming to any cable television carrier, but Buchanan's franchise generally permits input from the city and its residents concerning program. Last week, I was contacted by Suddenlink's Peter Brown and learned of the continued negotiations between Suddenlink and one of the primary programmers, Viacom. Viacom is the world's fifth-largest broadcasting and cable enterprise behind Comcast, the Walt Disney Company, the News Corporation, and Time Warner. Voting control of Viacom is held by National Amusements Inc., a privately-owned theater company controlled in turn by billionaire Sumner Redstone. Redstone also holds via National Amusements the controlling stake in CBS Corporation. The current Viacom was created on December 31, 2005, as a spinoff from CBS Corporation, which changed its name from Viacom to CBS at the same time. CBS, not Viacom, retains control of the over-the-air broadcasting, TV production, outdoor advertising, subscription pay television, including Showtime, and publishing assets like Simon &amp; Schuster. Predecessor firms of Viacom include Gulf and Western, which later became Paramount Communications Inc. and Westinghouse Electric Corporation. Comprising BET Networks, MTV Networks, and Paramount Pictures, Viacom operates approximately 170 networks, reaching approximately 700 million subscribers in 160 countries. The more popular cable services controlled by Viacom are, and these are all according to the current Nielsen information, number one, TV Land, two, Comedy Central, three, MTV, four, VH1, five, Spike TV, six, CMT, Country Music Television, seven, Nickelodeon, and eight, BET, Black Entertainment Television. All eight of the foregoing services were a part of the approximately 70-channel Buchanan Expanded BAC Cable Lineup on Tuesday, September 30, and all were removed on Wednesday morning, October 1. Negotiations between Suddenlink and Viacom came to an unamicable conclusion earlier this week. Suddenlink claims that Viacom was looking at a 50 percent increase to permit continued carriage of the above services. Suddenlink has replaced the eight removed cable services with much lesser-known services, including, and I had only heard of one of these, to be honest, Destination America, which is now on Channel 71, FXX, which is now on Channel 60, Hallmark Movies and Mysteries, which is now on Channel 43, OWN on Channel 66, Pivot on Channel 63, Sprout on Channel 30, Blaze on Channel 58, and UP on Channel 64. I understand this impasse will not be revisited anytime soon by Suddenlink, as the carrier has entered into new contractual agreements with the replacement service providers. Viacom claims that Suddenlink backed out of an offer to continue Viacom programming for one year. I'm attaching with this memo four articles that may help explain the party's positions. Those articles are captioned as follows. One, "Viacom: Suddenlink backed away from its own offer," appearing in the October 1, 2014 Charleston Daily Mail. Two, "This small cable operator may help unravel the pay-TV industry," appearing in the October 2, 2014 edition of Time Magazine Online. Three, "Suddenlink drops Viacom channels following pricing dispute," appearing in the October 1, 2014 edition of the Charleston Gazette. And four, "Suddenlink to drop Viacom channels in dispute over contract terms," appearing in the October 1, 2014 edition of Deadline.com. I understand that there are options available to residents who insist on receiving Viacom services, including through the Internet or through satellite providers such as Dish TV, DirecTV, et cetera. Here is a link to an article comparing the satellite service providers, so I've included that. I hope this helps explain why about 12 percent of our Buchanan TV cable lineup was disrupted on Tuesday. This issue really is not part of the current TV cable franchise renewal discussion that is ongoing. This kind of issue is likely to repeat itself, as carriers seem to be reaching negotiation impasses more frequently all of the time with programming companies. If you have any questions or comments about this matter, please feel free to contact. It's really one of those sad situations, whereas particularly a small rural community, we're caught between the proverbial rock and hard place with two of the giants in the telecommunications industry. Now, I have to, Suddenlink, I think, is now the seventh-largest cable provider in the United States. But the top five have tens of millions of subscribers. Suddenlink has, depending upon which service you look at as far as number of subs, either 1.2 million or 1.4 million total subscribers. This is the biggest television cable carrier to reach an impasse with Viacom. I'm told by Peter Brown that the rates passed on for those eight services, and in other places, more than eight services that carry more than eight Viacom services, that outfits like Comcast and Time Warner are paying a fraction per subscriber as to what Suddenlink and smaller cable providers are being charged, and that was the point of impasse. They wanted a level playing field, and apparently Viacom wouldn't give that to them. So I'd like to be able to report that, oh gee, they're still sitting around a table somewhere in St. Louis or New York City and discussing this, and maybe next week we'll get these things back. I understand that it will be at least a year before there would be any possible revisitation of the arrangements with Viacom. So put the word out to your friends and neighbors, it's not the city's fault that this has happened. The city did not okay it, nor does the city council get to okay such programming changes. I think as I've looked at Ordinance 347, Suddenlink has complied with the spirit and the letter of our municipal law. That's all I have on that issue, unless you have questions about it, but I do have some other updates. Can I proceed?
Please.
Couple other real quick things. We are continuing. There have been documents exchanged between Suddenlink representatives, primarily Mr. Brown and myself, regarding our franchise renewal. I think right now that I would plan on having to the council for a first reading at the first meeting in November, a franchise renewal of five years, which would require some additions to programming. Maybe we want them to bring back those eight Viacom services as part of those things that they are willing to do, but that's a point of discussion. I'll have something for you here in the next meeting, at worst, two meetings to look at. The Angus suit continues to be in discovery. There have been a second set of interrogatories served upon the plaintiff in the case, and of course, Rob Tenowitz with the Elkins firm is lead counsel with that, so as I learn more, I'll share that. Would remind the council that we had a very nice learning trail dedication on September 19, and there was some good follow-up discussion with the state representatives after that meeting that you can quiz Jerry Arnold about, but I think there's going to be terrific opportunity for Jerry to look at some additional grants and maybe connect the dots with that last thousand feet or so between downtown Buchanan and the new learning trail area. Last thing I have for you, I have continued to play phone tag with Anthony Martin, who is Chief of Staff with the Attorney General's Office. I called him again this morning, I was third time this week, and he did finally return my call while I was in class. I got out of class, had his cellphone, called him, and he was, did not return the call. So I haven't been able to speak with him. I'm still waiting some direction from our Attorney General on the FOIA request relative to our ALPR. I'll continue to stay on top of that and keep you abreast of those further developments. That's all I have this evening, unless you have questions for me.
Questions for David? Okay, we'll move ahead. You have a resignation letter form, Michael, with legacy, it's only more of appeals. Your spell check doesn't catch "form." So would jump down to G1. Michael's my recommendation to serve on the Water Board, and so I would ask if you are of a mind to appoint him to the Water Board, that we accept this resignation from the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Mayor, I am not of mind to accept him as board. I had another person in mind, and we had three to discuss at the last meeting, and we did not discuss them. We have other people that want to be on there, and I think as a council, we should consider all of them.
Okay, that's probably something we would take up in executive session.
I disagree.
Okay, then we'll lay aside this resignation for the time being and move ahead. Codification Service Walter Grain Company, Rick, you want to give us an update on that?
Absolutely, Mayor. In your packets, you are supplied with the final agreement that's been sent off, that the mayor signed off on for the Grain Company. This is actually for your information on how the process is going to proceed and exactly what it entails insofar as the codification services. We're looking at a process that takes up to a year long. There's quite intensive work between the city and the attorneys that will be doing the codification, and our very own city attorney. Mr. McCauley has been given the packet also as well to review so that he's on board as we move into the next process, which in this case will be conferences with their attorneys that'll come down here. We'll take a look at our ordinances and make sure that whatever we've supplied them is actually what we have in our book. So basically, that's about it. I wanted to make sure everybody understands where we're at. I know the press got a packet so they can get an idea of what codification is. I will tell you this interesting factoid, though. Buchanan had actually codified before, in 1911, they did a codification.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Before the charter.
I was not the city you turned on.
Are you sure?
You were looking at me like, did I do that? I didn't have anything to do with it. I'm sure it was a small book, so if David had done it, surely it would be really a big one.
How'd they do it?
They did it without computer-aided assistance or anything. They had to write it all down or review it all, so.
Well, that's 1911. Did we still have a North and South Buchanan at that time?
I think so.
That's about the time they did- That's about the time that the conglomeration of the two was right in that area. But they still had to take the state codes from the old Buchanan, and that's really what the codification was, taking out any of the old superseding, primarily a lot of the old Virginia laws that at one point were still part of our codes, so. That's all I had. I just wanted to make sure everybody's on board and we get an idea of what the...
It's the kind of thing that pops up when you get a history major for a recorder.
I loved it, yeah.
Jay, you going to talk a little bit more about this IRT project, or?
No, that's the letter that I was...
We jumped ahead there.
Yeah, that's the letter that I was speaking of earlier.
Anything else on that?
Well, you know, it's the letter from the Army Corps of Engineer that stated about the status of the report, and then I think the next six pages were just the highlighted items that I'd sent along to Major Hoyer, you know, stating what items need to be maintained at all times, and then the last two sheets were the square footage and acreage calculation. There's just under 62 acres of stream bank, riverbank, that would have to be cleared, 33 on one side and 60, I mean, 30, 29 on the other, you know, but that's the letter. If you all have any questions when you read that over, just feel free to call me, but that points out the declining rating that we've had since, I think, in 2000, from '71 through '99, our rating was good. 2001, it went down to accept, marginally, acceptable, and then it went to minimally acceptable, and that's kind of where we are today. And then, like I said, the next six pages detail what we must do to maintain that riverbank, and that's the letter, in a nutshell. Now, there were maps that we couldn't fold and get to you all that showed the project and original pictures that after the project was completed in the late 1970, not the late 70s, but after the project was completed in 1970, that showed, one, two, three, four, pictures of the project in its completed state with no trees, no vegetations, other than the grass.
How far back, Jay, do you have to clear?
They've established a water level, and it's basically, Dave, there's a cross-section that shows a bench on the left side, a cut bench, it's 10 feet wide. We have to go to the top of that cut bench, you know, it's 15 to 20 feet. Sometimes they're a little longer down the stream, the bank, you know. The guard said that, you know, they would have no problems, as I've reported earlier, you know, clearing the banks or assisting us, but they will not put their men or equipment in the water. You know, that would be up to the city to either do it themselves or hire a contractor, but any debris or vegetation that's in the river itself, the guard will not go in there.
So, you have trees 25, 30, 35 feet, they'll probably say, "It's a square meter."
If it's in that stream bank, you know, if it's below the bench, or its root system and stump is below the bench, it has to come out. Anything at the bench or above, which a lot of it is, you know, but I didn't calculate those areas because they weren't to be removed, but anything at the bench or above can remain. So, it's not as if we're going to be clearing the whole thing, just from the river channel to the bench, has to be cleared.
When you're clearing roots and stuff like that, do they consider erosion?
Yep, it's got to be put back and seeded and mulched, and a fine vegetative thing between five and four and six inches in height, or I think they said eight, you know, needs to be maintained.
And you said it could take seven to eight years.
I think it's a long-term project, and I think they realize that, because they can only devote so many men and so many units, I would assume, you know, I'm just, you know, speaking for them out of how the program works.
It's nine miles of road.
Right, four and a half on each side, four and a half miles.
That's pretty massive.
That's a large project, and, you know, each person can work 100 hours, you know, so they'll bring in numerous crews, because that's just two and a half weeks.
And one year, and one year, they don't have to work 100 hours?
No, on this particular project, you know, so they'll just rotate crews in and out, and then the next year, they do it again. But that's how we, when I spoke with Mr. Failey, who's with the local guard, that's how we talked about and envisioned the program, because he thought he would probably be heading it up, and knows how the IRT programs work, and that's probably how it would be addressed.
It's going to be a tremendous project.
It's going to be a large.
And I see that they even tell you how to mix your seed mixture.
Yeah, that's a little old, but yes, but yeah, that's what was planned in. I mean, they went into a lot of detail, and it was a lot of work. It was a seven-year project.
We don't have to worry about ship-o.
No ship-o. No ship-o. Well, let the Army Corps do its ship-o.
Okay, thanks. In your consent agenda, we have approval of minutes of the regular meeting of September 17, building and wiring permits, payment of the bills, flood plain management progress report, which you've heard, financial statement for June 30, which you've heard some of that. Would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move out of E1 down to F, and that would make it F1.
Okay.
No, E1, wait a minute, where am I?
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, I'm right.
Okay, so we're, consent agenda is minus the approval of minutes, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by Tom.
Second.
And second discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, brings us to F. We'll consider E1 approval of minutes. You have something?
It's just a correction to the minutes. I'm not quite sure how, do you want me to read this, from the front, from the two?
Yeah, from and to.
From and to. Paragraph number four of those minutes read, Council of all chastise Mr. McCauley for not alerting council of the improper motion. She said several people came in to speak against the ordinance, and not everyone was included in the process. That was what was in the minutes. I'd like to recommend a change to be, Councilmember of all chastise Mr. McCauley, I don't even like the word chastise, but I could come up with a better one. Mr. McCauley for not alerting council of the improper motion. She said he, McCauley, did not include all the property owners within and adjacent to the proposed college zone. Extra steps needed to ensure that all residents were informed of the college zone were not taken. Shame on him, shame on the city council, the city council, for rushing to go forward with the college zone without full council present. And if he had notified everyone, and if council had waited, there would not have been residents addressing council this evening who were not notified and were not asking important questions and sharing concerns as property owners after the ordinance had been passed.
Now, my question is, is that what you said at council meeting?
Yep.
You had it in writing, didn't you?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to amend the minutes of September 18 as suggested.
I'll say.
Motion made to second it, further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. You consider the minutes of the meeting in September. We'll approve the minutes as amended. Motion, please.
We approve the minutes of September, the whatever it was, as amended.
Eighteenth.
Yeah, 18th as amended.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it. I know that seems a little bit strange, but that's the way Roberts says you're supposed to do it. Appointment to fill Water Board vacancy, we're going to pass on that for a moment. West Virginia Wesleyan College Zone Ordinance 383. What do you want to talk about?
Well, I guess I'll start. I still feel extremely committed to, I wrote an editorial to the editor last week in the Record della, stating my position. In fact, I would like to include that letter as part of this meeting tonight, and also have it on the webpage. I'll take responsibility for not doing my job as I should have. Now, I made an incorrect assumption, I shouldn't have made an assumption, that when this ordinance was first presented to this council on August 7, which we all voted yes, we would move forward with it, I thought that the property owners that were affected within the proposed zone and adjacent to the zone were part of the planning process, and they weren't. I tried, after the first, or second day after that meeting, I had several phone calls with residents in that area, both within the zone and adjacent to it, that articulated to me that they were upset, that they were never given the opportunity or notified that there was going to be such an ordinance. On August, or July 28, the ordinance was presented to the Planning Commission that night, 12 pages, and they recommended it to the city council. On the meeting of August 21, I asked for consideration to have it table or put it on hold. I had notified some members of city council what I had found out, including the mayor, and was told that we'll deal with it the next council meeting, which is the 21st of August. Two people were not here that are elected representatives because of family crises. I think both of those individuals would agree to table the motion or put it on hold in a process that's inclusive and does not disenfranchise our residents. I have an issue, which I've said repeatedly, when there's an issue that involves the college. We really have a conflict of interest with Mr. McCauley being the general counsel for the college and our city attorney. I'm so committed to that, we have to have a separation there, that there are times when we should, as a council, in my opinion, ask for independent legal counsel involving those issues. David, '95, '96, '97, the time, doesn't have a conflict of interest, because there's not a college involvement as far as an ordinance or other kind of processes that are here. But we have to recognize that there is a conflict there, potential conflict, and we have to deal with it. I made an illegal motion a couple council meetings ago, and that was, I think, September 4 or 5. The, voted four to three to rescind the motion, and I really wanted to send it back to the Planning Commission and have an opportunity for a process that was inclusive. I don't want to make any amendments to this motion. I want it either abolished or rescinded, consideration to have a process that is the way it should be. My letter to the editor says, "I've been here on council for a little over 10 years. I believe on two things very much," sort of trying to get me to be fair. I believe in a level playing field and transparency. I don't think this process with the commission, Planning Commission, was either one. There was no other individual property owners at that Planning Commission, only the college, no other. And I think we should admit we made a mistake, we made an error. This is not anti-college by any means. I support the college, I think it's a wonderful asset, a wonderful resource. I've had three kids go there, you know, I've worked there for a long time. I've always had what I consider a good relationship with the college. I don't think any of the residents have anti-college sentiment, but they want to be included in this process, and they weren't. So, I like to know what we need to do as a council to abolish, rescind, override ordinance 383, the college zone, and get it back in a process that, the way it should have been done in the first place. I made a mistake, I think we all made a mistake on August 7, but I don't think we should have upheld it. Only three people sitting up here voted on the August 21 to continue with it. So, that's my position, and I'd like to know what we need to do.
Anybody got a ball bag?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't like this.
Turn that thing off.
I had it off!
You did with a ball bag.
Asking me, thank you.
I don't know.
Who was it?
Oh, silent.
Yeah.
I apologize, I really do.
I'd like to concur with what David said, too. I too feel it was, I'll take part of the blame on that, too, David, because I think, I believe I seconded that motion at that time, and was done in haste. We realized that we'd done something that really should have been done a little bit slower, and in doing so, we committed something that could be called unethical or whatever, but on the same token, we were not advised by our legal advisor that we should have the way it should have been done. So, I'll take part of the responsibility, too, and I'd like to also say that I think we should revisit this and send it back to the Planning Commission, however we have to do it. I don't know the way it's to be done, but I think we should.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment?
Sure.
At our last city council meeting at the end, when the council was having comments, is when Mr. Thomas asked directly to Mr. McCauley that the matter, if the matter stated that the matter could, and Mr. McCauley answered that the matter could be sent back to the Planning Commission, but it was not on the agenda. To abolish a form of legislation, another ordinance needed adopted. In the case of the zoning ordinances, those matters must be referred to the Planning Commission, who would then recommend their suggestions back to city council. At least two-thirds council members must refuse the suggestions of Planning Commission. In order to send this back, this matter back to the Planning Commission, it needs to be put on the next council agenda for October 2, and the proper legal advisance must be published. Now, it was placed on the agenda, and David, that's what you advised us at the last council meeting, because that's right out of the minutes.
I did a correction.
Okay. And I don't know about the proper legal advisements, but the other thing I'd like to say is that, as the, Mayor, you appointed me as the city council member to the Planning Commission, and you...
Council did.
Council did, sorry. Council did, and I...
And I fully concur.
And you fully concur. Don't get me tickled. I take my responsibilities as a city council member and as a person who has served on many city boards as a civilian very seriously. Not in a process of a witch hunt here. What I'm trying to do is to ensure that this council fixes what we did wrong, and the reason I know that we were wrong is because at our last council meeting, we had two members, property owners of the adjacent property of the college zone, which would have been the college zone, who came to this council and spoke, and they brought in, they brought up some very valid, valid reasons why they were not for the college zone. So, if they did that, there are others that were not, they were not given the opportunity to be a part of the process, and they should be, and the other people should be, and that's why I recommend, as the Planning Commission council person, that we return this to the Planning Commission. We abolish it, we start from ground floor and start all over again, all over again. Now, there's questions coming to me about, is there really a need for a college zone? I don't know, okay? Because we even had people within the Planning Commission to come forward to this council to share how uncomfortable they were with the rush, okay? And somewhere, I did a timeline, and I can't remember, but I've never seen something rush so fast unless I've been missing out on ordinances. I mean, it went bang, 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 went right through, and now, I've gotten, I've gotten over the fact that council didn't wait on myself and Councilwoman Kopari to come back. I think if you guys had done that, I'm going to say you guys, because there was no women here, and if you had done that, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now, because I think this is something that I would have picked up on, and I believe I would have in the beginning, but by then, it was too late. It was too late. So, my recommendation is this council, I don't know if you need a motion, Mayor, I don't know, but I recommend that we take it back and start all over again, and give the adjacent property owners their opportunity, and also some of those that got letters, all that was a little rushed, and we want to get away from this looking like we're giving people preference and we're giving to some and not to the others, you know?
That's it, occurs to me. And David, you focus something at me if I'm wrong here.
Sure.
To do something within the realm of the zoning ordinance itself, to modify the zoning ordinance, requires an amendment to that ordinance.
That is correct.
An... An, an ordinance amending the original, and that also has to be preceded by a reference to the Planning Commission for their recommendation and a public hearing.
That is correct, Mayor, that's correct.
So to drop this ordinance, we have to send it intact to the Planning Commission for them to recommend back to us that we rescind it, and we have to have a public hearing.
Or not. The Planning Commission, as a body of 15 people, could say this ordinance is fine, in which case, if it comes back to the City Council, that would require two-thirds of the voting members of council, five out of seven people, would have to reject that recommendation.
Have to reject, right.
That's correct.
So, I don't think that the whole ordinance is bad. The whole zone is bad. There's some things on it that need to be fixed. I agree, I agree. But I think we could fix that by amending the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Let me finish.
Yes, sir.
You've got yours in.
I'm sorry.
Let me finish. And, so Kate disagreed, we don't have to be mad at one another to disagree. The, the process would be the same, and we would have an end product that would work. That's my two cents. David, will you start or say something?
Yeah, I, I, this is my opinion. I don't think it addresses the flawed process. I mean, if we have to go back to the Planning Commission and have them recommend that the ordinance should be rescinded and taken up again, I think that's preferable to me. I think that whatever we do, I think we have to have independent legal counsel involved in this process, because I don't think Mr. McCauley, he can try to be as impartial, you know, maybe he's more than superhuman, I don't know, but he can't do both. He can't, as a, I mean, the general counsel of the college and the city attorney were the same persons wrote the ordinance. That is, I mean, let's just use some common sense. And, and I'm not saying that there's a conflict with David every time he does any kind of ordinance, that's not the case, but when the college is involved, we ought to protect ourselves as a city council, and David, too. I mean, it's so obvious to me, I don't, I don't understand why we don't do, deal with that. And, I mean, there's a lot of issues here, I think. That's one of the issues, and the other is the lack of a good process that was inclusive. I don't, I mean, you can look at that ordinance, included but not limited to, that's in there about 12 or 14 times. What does that mean, included but not limited to? I don't know. How's the next city attorney going to interpret that? You know, I, I think it's, the issue ought to be rescinded, abolished, whatever we have to do, that we gotta go legal notice and have a public hearing. That'd be great. That's what we maybe should have done in the first place, at the very beginning, which we did not do. So I feel very strongly about that, and, and I think, you know, Ron hasn't said too much yet, Pam hasn't said, Rick hasn't, Tom hasn't, but that's my position, and I don't know, if you need a motion to do that, I don't know. I want to do what's right, and I don't think we did what's right.
Well, part of the, part of the situation here is, and, I think we could have done a better job, too, but-
Well, there is no-
We, we tried lots of different times, in different ways, to communicate with different members of the public, and we seem to fail. I remember we were having this discussion here in this room about the farmer's market when we were in the process of building Jawbone Park the way it is now, and we had a room full of irate farmers who didn't know what we were doing. They were mad because we were changing things and they didn't know anything about it. Rich Clemmons, who was the recorder at the time, was trying to say to them, it was, we'd been talking about this for, for a year, and we had been, because we didn't snap our fingers, Jerry didn't get out of her snappy fingers and rebuild Jawbone Park, it took some time. And, well, they hadn't, hadn't heard, and he said, "Was in the local newspaper, I don't read Record Delta, what was in the Inner Mountain, I don't read the Inner Mountain. There's been articles on, in, in the Clarksburg paper, I don't read the Clarksburg paper. What's been on Channel 12, don't watch Channel 12, it was on Channel 5, I don't watch Channel 5." I mean, how far are we required to go to get your attention? Looking here, I know how to get your attention, you're here, you come, I understand that. But, and I've moaned this fact, too, that, that at our last election, we had 28% turnout. 28% of people come to vote means that 72% stayed home. 72% of the registered voters of City of Buckhannon didn't come to vote. Now, if we're going to improve this process, I think somebody needs to tell me, I think somebody needs to tell Dave McCauley, how do we notify these people who are affected so that they will come to a meeting and tell us how they feel? How do you do that?
Do you want me to give you a suggestion?
Tell me how you do it.
I, I, I think with a planning commission, once you had this potential ordinance, okay, we sent legal notices after the first reading to all the property owners within the zone. You know, we could have done that-
Beforehand.
Exactly, and we could have done that with adjacent property. I don't want to compare apples and oranges. The farmer's market, you know, that was the issue.
No, in general, how do you communicate?
Well, I think-
Tell me how we communicate.
That, what I'm suggesting is you send letters to each one of the property owners that are going to be affected within the zone or adjacent to it. That's just common sense to me. They weren't involved in the process whatsoever, individual property owners. Only, only one, only one property owner was involved, and he is also general counsel for that property owner and city attorney.
Dave, let me, Tim, you, you live across the street there, and you were saying you didn't know.
Well, apparently there was something in October in the paper.
Last, last year.
Tiny little thing, and, and even when one article did come out in the paper, it mentioned at the intersection of College Avenue and Mead Street north towards the river. And then by the time I know that this is going on, I see a map appear, a mission creep has begun, of college, taking half of College Avenue on the other side from me, and I'm going, why, why is this all of a sudden just getting bigger? Are they going to keep appropriating no matter what? I don't have any problem with, with, with college zone in, on the campus and in that direction, but I think they should, they should grow up as to devout. This, this mission creep is disturbing me, the, the, the likelihood of problems with traffic, noise, lighting, parking, they're just not even being considered. And a letter to me would have had me down here.
I, I think inceptionally, all of us think that that, this may not be a bad idea, but what's involved with citizens and the residents?
Well, when I, I found my little timeline, we had a Planning Commission meeting on the 28th of July, Rich submitted a, Rich Clemmons, who is the Planning Commission chairman and zoning officer, submitted a memo to City Council on the 1st of August. The 7th of August, we met again, 7th August meeting, we had the first reading of the ordinance, okay? And then on 12 August, the letter went out to the property owners, it was dated the 12th, and they went out certified mail those that were identified.
Within the zone itself, not adjacent.
Right. Not, not adjacent, the ones that were in. And, and, and our Planning Commission has, has, to my knowledge, we, we don't have any bylaws, you know, we're required by West Virginia state statutes to meet four times a year, and there's, there's, there's a lot of things that we could probably do to improve this process if we work together as a Planning Commission, and then improve the process of including the citizens within and without, adjacent to and within, and I, I just think that's just so very important. When you, when you talk about property.
David?
Mayor, planning and zoning is set forth in the state statute. I've heard adjectives describing a flawed process, a wrong process. You can call the process that was followed in this situation, anything you want to call it, but it certainly wasn't illegal. Every single possible check that was required under the state code was very strictly adhered to. Barry Pritz came to the October 18, 2013 meeting and asked for the council to consider establishment of a college zone. You can go on YouTube and look at that meeting, there were very positive remarks registered by everybody on City Council that night. Nothing else was said directing anybody to prepare an ordinance. We move along to about March, and I'm not sure which meeting it was in March, because I didn't pull it up to look at it, but you can go YouTube it, and there was discussion about that time, about the armory perhaps being open because they were running ahead with their development out there, that the armory was going to be open perhaps as early as the 1st of October. During that meeting, I mentioned to the council, I said, "We've got some zoning issues out there with the armory property," and while I would be working on that ordinance, I would remind the council that going back to whenever it was in the fall that Barry Pritz had been here, now we know it was October 18, requesting the college district, that I would like some direction from the council to prepare the necessary ordinances, if that was the will of the council, as I always propose those recommendations. And I believe council members Thomas and Q were the guys that made that motion to have me start the work on the necessary ordinances. Thereafter, there were maps that I brought to different council meetings, updating the council, here's what the college already owns, here's about where we would be talking about with the college district, we're working on a draft, there's a committee of folks that I'm sharing this information with, that include Mr. Dos, our city administrator, Mr. Clemmons, our city zoning and housing enforcement officer, I included you, Mayor, on those emails, and yes, Barry Pritz on behalf of the college was included. So there were like five people that were laying in as early as last April. As we get to May, and we still haven't advanced the ordinance, I'm saying, "Guys, I need some feedback, I need some input on this. If we want to have things ready to go so that the armory can open and you can do what you want to with alcohol distribution and all that stuff, as well as this college district, which isn't as big a deal, isn't as time sensitive, I just need some feedback on these ordinances." Rich weighed in, Barry Pritz weighed in, I got more information, I put a draft together. It was now about the 1st of June, and there'd been a city election, we had one city recorder going out, Mr. Edwards was coming in. I mentioned that, "Look, you need to get a Planning Commission meeting scheduled before you can consider this." Well, why do we need to be in a rush to do that? Because the Planning Commission, especially on the armory issue, needs to make a recommendation to council so that the council can do boom, boom, a first and second reading ordinance, and have it in place before the 1st of October. So these ordinances, they didn't have to go hand in hand, but it just so happened that that's the way it was working out, I was working on both ordinances. There was a class 2 legal advertisement that started, it was either at the end of June or the 1st of July that was in the paper, saying there was going to be a Planning Commission meeting. That notice period complied with state code. The Planning Commission met, I believe it was July 28th, and I think 11 of the 15 members were present at that meeting, if I'm not mistaken. There was a couple of hours of things taken up in that meeting, and it wasn't all about the college zone, it wasn't all about the armory, the comprehensive plan was discussed, too. For the first time in my 32 years as city attorney, I had ordinances on both matters ready for the Planning Commission to look at, because I thought there might be some controversy associated with this college zone. Normally, we don't have an ordinance ready for the Planning Commission to look at, the Planning Commission makes general recommendations, this is what we'd like to see in that ordinance before you take it to the City Council, and then I draft the ordinance. In these instances, the ordinances were drafted weeks before the Planning Commission even had that meeting. So I've heard folks say, "Boy, this was highly inappropriate, we didn't have the ordinance until that night of the Planning Commission meeting." That's the first time in the history of the 41 years we've had zoning in the city of Buckhannon that the Planning Commission had an ordinance to look at before the council acted on it. Planning commissions don't pass ordinances, City Council does, as the legislative body of the city. So it was really something to gauge what the Planning Commission wanted to do, get some thought. Based upon that discussion, there were recommendations for changes made, not with, so much with respect to the armory ordinance, although I think there was one thing that we added that Mr. Edwards honed in on. There were two substantial changes on the college district zone. I affected those changes, I think the next day, I sent it out to everybody that was involved with it, the City Council members, the whole bit. The council members, every single person on council had that ordinance some two weeks before it was actually considered on a first reading on August 7th. So you had the ordinance, it's placed on the agenda to consider those two zoning ordinances. I showed up, I presented the ordinances, they both unanimously passed. Under state code, before you do the final reading of the ordinance on a planning zoning thing, you have to do two things. You have to publish the class 2 ad, which we started immediately, got in as a class 2 ad before that August 21st meeting, and we sent 10 days, maybe it was nine days, but it doesn't say, it just says, "Before the ordinance goes into effect," it's got to be at least 30 days before that. Well, this was more like 50 days before the ordinance was going to go into effect, if it passed at all on second reading. 19 packets, certified mailings went out. It was $7 and, I can't remember the exact penny, $7.64 a packet or whatever it was. Those were all sent and all received before the August 21st meeting. Every single property owner in the college zone, and I want to talk about that for just a second, the, the state code does not say that people on the periphery get notices, it says, "Certified mailing shall be made to the affected property owners within the zone scheduled to be changed." How could I, as the attorney for the city, take it upon myself to say, "I think I'm going to include everybody on College Avenue, and I'm going to include everybody on Mead Street, and, you know, some folks out there in Tullerton might think they're affected by what's going to go on with the college."
Which is why there's a conflict eventually, because you not wanting to involve anyone else.
It's a minute now, please, don't interrupt. We'll, we'll get around to our, you will discuss.
The state code says the property owners within the chain zone are required to be notified by certified mailing, in addition to the legal ad. All of that was done by the letter of the law in the state code. Now, if this City Council, after 41 years, we've had zoning since 1973, and that process, that language hasn't changed, if you want to change the process that has been followed for the entirety that this city has had zoning, fine, I think you can do that. I think you can send that to the Planning Commission and say, "We think we'd like to reach out more than what the state code requires." But it wasn't up to me, as the city attorney, to in midstream, to change what is in that ordinance and say, "I took it upon myself to let a few other people in on the certified mail package, that's $7.64 a pop." We did everything according to the state code, and, and if, if the city wants to do something more, if this legislative body, our City Council, desires to do more from a PR perspective to exceed what the state law requires, I think you can do that. But I can't do that as your city attorney, that's not up to me. So I hope that explains-
I'm not suggesting that you do that, David. I think we, as a council, should have gone way beyond to involve the people in the process, period.
And I'm saying you can't.
Yeah, and I don't, and I, I think the ordinance is such that it needs massive overhauling, but the whole process itself needs to be looked at, and I think, you know, my position is, we rescind it, abolish it, go back to the Planning Commission, have a public hearing, and do what's common sense.
And?
And I don't want to make this any more complicated than it already is, but I do have a question, because at the Planning Commission meeting that night, one thing I would like to know, if Mary had already been appointed to the Planning Commission, because if she hadn't, I'm not even sure we had a quorum that night, because I've been sitting here thinking of all the people that I know were there.
If we did, you had not had a quorum?
And I can only come up with seven, and if there's 15, then it seems to me it would take eight to make a quorum.
No, you have to, you have 15 that are on it, but there are three vacancies on the board, that'd be six. So you would only actually need seven, well, what?
13.
Six, seven. Six.
And I wasn't as of that time.
Well, I'm not cutting my arm off. And I won't cut my tongue off because I have something else to say.
Go ahead, Ann.
The whole thing that bothers me the most about this, and I have sat here and listened tonight to everything that went on for the months ahead of time, nowhere did I hear anything said about anybody other than college officials, a few people involved with city council. I have not heard one single time people that were in that zone or adjacent to that zone having any kind of input. You know, it doesn't take much, if you know someone who lives around there, to pick up the phone and call and say, "Hey, did you know we're thinking about doing this? I'd like to hear what you have to say about it." That takes nothing but a little bit of time. And it still bothers me, and I resent the fact that on the first page of that, and this is egg on my face, because that night, I did not take time to read all the whereases, and I have said this before, turned to the ordinance part of it and did not realize that it was already written in there and assumed the planning commission was going to pass that that night. Now, I don't know, and then the date was later inserted because there was a line under it as a place for the date to be inserted. That is wrong. And I've said it before, we had maybe a discussion for a period of time. I did not, we didn't get it until that night, and I don't care if that's the first time that's ever happened, that makes no difference to me. We should get something that important as a zoning issue change ahead of time to be able to peruse it, read it, look at it, see what it says, and see what problems, or maybe no problems, there might be with it. And that has not happened. It's been a complaint of mine for years. I've been on the planning commission for about, I don't know, 10, 12 years now, and never do we get information, I shouldn't say never, rarely do we get information ahead of time to be able to have time to sit down and read it and look at it. And it embarrasses me that that night, so many of the people on the planning commission, and they could have very plausible excuses, I'm not saying that, but there were only six or seven of us there. And again, that's another reason why I think there should be more input into it. And I said before, I'm not against the concept possibly, but the more I look at it, the more I would like to know, and no one has ever answered this question, what is in that ordinance that would allow the college to do that they cannot do now with what they are planning to do in the future? I'm a Wesleyan graduate. I wanted my kids to go there, but they decided not to. But, you know, I had a lot of years at Wesleyan. I'm not against Wesleyan in any means, but this process left out the people in that area. And I'll give you another example. Right over at Clarksburg, where, and I don't know whether it's East Horn or whichever one it is, where Star Furniture and all that is, those people on that hillside over there were treated exactly the same way. And when the lights went up, people started moving out of that area because they did not want to be where all those lights were, that they had not been informed about before that happened. You have to include the people. City council, planning commission, whatever, we work for the people, not, and I don't care if technically you followed the legal point of the law, that doesn't, you know, yes, you have to do that, but it's wrong when you leave the people out.
Jim.
I wasn't going to say anything. I really wasn't. But two things really hit me, and Tim brought up about the, how, I forget how you word, the creeping.
Mission creep.
Mission creep of it creeping. And then Dave made a joke about, well, maybe I should have notified people in Tenerton or whatever, and, you know, that were on the outline skirts, but, and I've not said anything, there's a couple council members that know this, but, and I hate that Rich is not here this evening, he's a friend, but I can tell you, and that was a concern I had, and I've not mentioned it openly, but almost a year ago, Rich Clemmons, I approached about putting in some, actually, there were storage units on East Main Street, corner of East Main and Factory, which is definitely not in the college zone. This was almost a year ago, and he personally told me and my father that we could not do that because that would not be approved in the campus zone. That was a year ago. And I looked at him and laughed, and I said, "What do you mean the campus zone? I've never heard of a campus zone." And I really, I was joking, you know, everyone knows Rich has his dry sense of humor. I kind of blew him off. We're in other organizations together. My dad called him, and this has been a good year ago, and I have a witness to our conversations, I don't want anyone thinking it wasn't happening. But my dad called him, and he told him the same thing, that we couldn't do whatever because on the East Main and Factory, right, it would have been right behind Split Rail, was in the campus zone, which was almost a year ago. And then I came to the planning commission meeting, and I didn't question it. Rich is our zoning officer, I assumed he knew that. He told my dad that, "Well, if you want to put in a little sporting goods store that would be conducive to the students and the campus, that'd be okay, a retail store." But we couldn't put in storage units, which we thought would be conducive in town because there's always a shortage. So when we came to the planning commission meeting that night and it came up, I looked at Rich and I said, "You told me a year ago that we couldn't do this, it was in the campus zone, and apparently the campus zone doesn't even exist." You have a question, Tom?
Well.
So that concerns me because it goes to the creeping, you know, and, you know, I'm not anti-college either, but when you're told a year ago that it exists and you can't do something in a campus zone, and you find out, you know, like in July, that it's not even, it doesn't even exist, I mean, that's a little bit of a concern.
So what do we need to do legally?
It's not going to be a violation of code or statute to, you know, conceptually, I think we all may be positive about a college zone, but let's get it done the right way rather than what was done.
David.
And I'm not saying David didn't do.
The other David.
What he should have done. I mean, I still have the issue with the two councils being the same person. But, you know, the least we can do, in my opinion, is when you're going to have something of this importance, notify the property owners, if you have to, by certified letter, the adjacent property owners. And I tried to table this. This is what irritates the heck out of me. I tried to table this because of everything I said in my letter to the editor. And I think if Pam and Mary would have been here, the darn ordinance probably wouldn't have passed and been tabled. So we could get people involved. That's my position. And I have a letter to the editor that I'll pass on to Mr. Edwards to.
Consistent with what I identified at the last meeting, if the council would like the planning commission to reconsider the college zone, make additional recommendations, I've heard somebody talk about maybe there should be a college one and a college two zone. You can send that back for full consideration, reconsideration by the planning commission. And then that body needs to comply with state code, needs to be a class-two legal ad. I think it's at least 15 days' notice before you schedule that meeting. Whatever items are going to be on the agenda, I think Mr. Edwards has a couple other things relative to your comprehensive plan, relative to the formal zoning of the property that was recently annexed out at ADS. Put those things on the agenda, include them in the legal ad, set a date certain. If council wants to come to the planning commission meeting, you're invited to do that. There were, I think, four of the seven council members at that July planning commission meeting. So there's no, it's, anybody can come to that. And it can be all put out there for discussion. If you think it's going to be a largely attended meeting as a practical matter, you might move it to the gym at Stocker Youth Center, another place that you could accommodate more folks.
That's what we, so, we need a motion to refer the ordinance back. Refer this ordinance 383 back to the planning commission.
For further discussion, consideration, vetting out of concerns, whatever it is that that life takes on with that. I understand that this ordinance went into effect a couple weeks ago.
Yeah.
And it's there right now. If you want to change it, then the planning commission can say, "We want to do this differently than what was originally proposed." They can make a recommendation that's reduced to a report. It comes back to the city council. Council looks at that report and says, "Yes, we like that recommendation. We're going to, we want to prepare the necessary amendments to the ordinance," whether it's me, or if you want to hire special counsel and go to that exercise.
You have an ordinance that basically override that and have a new.
Yes, absolutely. It's an amended touree ordinance, absolutely.
I'd make that a motion.
Motion to refer ordinance 383 to the planning commission for further study and review.
Since I was the original one that seconded the other motion, I will second that, David.
Motion's made and seconded. Robert.
I just want a real quick comment. As is planning commission members here in council, if you go the route of notifying people around the zone, is that going to be the precedent to any zoning change in the city? If you change a house thing somewhere, are you going to have to notify somebody around that house as well? So you're maybe, think about setting the precedent here that maybe it takes place on any zoning change.
I think that's a good observation. Well, I think anything we do, we're setting a precedent. Yeah, okay. But I'm, our consideration is for this motion. Ready for the question?
Yes.
All in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Yes, have it. Mr. Corey, you'll refer this back to the planning commission. Next item, fireman selection council recommendation. We had an interview last Tuesday night, Tuesday night?
Wednesday.
Last night.
Wednesday.
Yeah, last evening. I've lost track of time. I had my wife at the hospital again last evening, so, but somebody tell me what we got cooking.
Mr. Mayor, we met and interviewed the candidates, and it was a recommendation of the committee that we give the name of Aaron Goff to be employed by the fire department as a full-time paid fireman.
Well, unanimous.
Unanimous.
Of the council.
Of the council.
Okay. So make your motion.
I move that we approve Aaron Goff as a paid fireman for the city of Buchanan.
I second.
Motion made and seconded.
I'll second it.
Mary seconded. All you get to do is, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Yes, sir.
Comments and announcements, Mary?
Are we going to executive session?
Yes, we have an executive session.
Comments and announcements. I guess this is what you call being what we're supposed to be. You know, we're a council of people, serving the people, and I'm proud to still be with all of you. And you too, Dave McCauley. And I think that we're going to do some work in our planning commission. I'm going to talk to them about doing certain things within the planning commission itself, maybe like some bylaws or procedures and that kind of thing, because I don't know if we have them. The only person who would know that is Rich, and I haven't been able to ask him. So anyhow, that's my, I'll hush.
Pam?
I just want to know if there's still three vacancies on the planning commission.
Yes.
And we have a pending resignation.
Well, I'd like to invite somebody out there in the city to get involved.
Want to serve on the planning commission?
If you want your voice, then put your name out there.
Send us an email. Send us an email. Send it, send one to mayor.
Real quick, what is the process? Because I actually sent an email in a year and a half ago to be on the planning commission, and it was never brought to council. So can you just, maybe for the public, explain if someone has an interest, what the process is, how that works?
Trying to remember, who did you send it to? Send it to me?
Mr. Clemmons.
Send it, send it to, to mayor@butcannonwv.org.
Do another one.
And I'll get.
What is your name?
Kristina.
Another way is to send it to the city council.
Right. I don't know. I don't get.
Just one more thing.
If you sent an email, you sent it, mayor@butcannonwv.org.
I was disappointed that that vote was taken when Mary and I had a family crisis. Something that important, I feel, should have been tabled, and I would have voted to table it because I still had questions myself, but I was disappointed, and I told everybody that I was disappointed in them doing that while we're not here. I would have voted to table it.
I'll tell y'all she got in my face.
Yes, she did. She said, "Right there, I got something to say." She said it.
That's okay.
Yes.
Rick.
I got nothing.
Tom?
I'd like to acknowledge Circuit Judge Hall, who's joined us tonight, and just say, "Well, Judge."
Thank you. Thank you.
Ron?
I personally want to apologize to the ladies for not including him in the vote. I'd also like to say, "Go Bucks" tonight, tomorrow night when you play in Lewis County. Let's whip the ball up really good. Way to go up there. And see, judges, everybody's holding these ears, but that's the way it goes.
The circuit's going to be aware.
Going to be aware. And just keep on keeping on because that's what I'm here for.
One last thing, Mary, please.
Yes, Mary.
I just got to say one last thing. I'm glad you're here, Judge, but, you know, and I know you're running for office, but I want that not to reflect from us here at council.
Sure. No, I'm not here to help.
Okay, good.
I mean, I guess wherever I go, I'm helped.
Yes, you are.
He thought there was a meal tonight, okay?
There's no food tonight.
Dave, Tom.
I'm really disappointed in that.
Dave?
Well, you know, I always got to say something, I guess.
Yeah, here we go.
I hope, I hope this evening, in some ways, was a watershed event for us up here at council. You know, I dropped the ball on this on the 7th. I made an assumption I shouldn't have made, and I think that we really need to, my letter to the other, level playing field and transparency. I think that's really important. I would challenge the students out there, make sure you get involved in your community and find out what's going on and try and make a difference. I tried to include the two ladies, so I want to apologize for them not having a chance to vote because I thought they should have had a chance. But I'm glad they're here now, and we'll do hopefully the right thing with the planning commission. We need to, I think we all need to be there.
I agree.
And I think it's something that's really critical for us. And Bob Osborne, I appreciate you bringing that up because that's part of the process the planning commission needs to take a look at, is what do they need to do to involve people? Thanks.
Okay. My turn. My wife will beat me if I say too much, but my wife's been really sick and had some surgery, and I haven't been around very much yet, and I apologize for that, even last evening. I thought about coming to the fire interviews, and I had to take her back to the ER. She had some sinus surgery. Doctor says she got roto-ruder. She had a really bad bleed Tuesday morning and scared people to death. I had to get the ambulance to come and get her. So it's been a little rough around Bateson House for the past couple of weeks or so.
My prayers and thoughts are with you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, but I think she's getting there. That, according to West Virginia state code, if we go into executive session, we have to state the, we have to refer to the code section and say what we're meeting for. So I'd appreciate it if you all, council, ever give me a chance to say this before you jump in and start making a motion.
Have you noticed how much smoothly things have been running since you've been?
Yeah, yeah, I have noticed that, yeah. So I'm requesting a motion to enter into executive session under West Virginia Code 69A-4 for personnel. That's a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That means y'all can.
Aye, aye, aye.